This is one. I wasn't sure what you were gonna do, so I didn't want somebody to be go-
And then, who's gonna announce the winner?
This is a hundred percent charge.
Okay.
Is it like a penalty? Cause she had to leave yesterday at home.
She's here, but she's over at Reston this morning, so she should be back by ten.
At the very- we'll do the baskets to the very end.
I'm trying to touch it.
Right, okay.
There was a mouse. Thanks.
Alan, would you like to lead us in our flag sleeve this morning?
That's fine.
Rhonda?
Good morning, welcome to the December sixteenth Tulare County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please rise with us as we pledge allegiance will be led by Supervisor Ashida and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The more we will begin our meeting today with Board of Supervisor matters Supervisor Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last weekend, I was in Bakersfield all weekend for the holiday classic cattle show, the number one reason, cause my three granddaughters are there showing, so that's kind of, I really enjoyed going down there and being with them. Yesterday, we went to the swearing in of three new sergeants at the Sheriff's Department, that was quite a, quite an event, a lot of people there, and congratulations to the recipients. Tomorrow, I'll be taking my ethics training, I guess they thought I was unethical or something, so I guess I better take my training. No, we do this every two years, so I'd rather do it this way than go online and, and, and do it this way, so. And then Thursday, I'll be, it's my turn in the barrel for the Agri luncheon, businessman's luncheon in Porterville, which I'm a member of, and I'll be cooking over there. So, got a lot of stuff going on the rest of the week too, so, but that's all I have right now, thank you.
Supervisor Ashida.
I attended a Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board meeting in Grass Valley recently, and that's all I have.
Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, or this afternoon, rather, the London will be having their annual Christmas parade, and I guess we've hit the big time now, for twenty years, they've had a Christmas parade, but this year, we had, we're supposed to have a permit. We weren't prepared for that, but we're gonna have it, we got it worked out, and we're gonna have it anyway, and, and it really is a bigger event this year. Because of the publicity that's been, that's come to the community about plans towards, which are moving forward to put a county library in the community, we will be having about twenty entries, including the Diniva High School Band, the Diniva Junior High Band, and those are, those are, that's totally new and different for us, so it's a good thing for, for London, and we're happy to have it happen. Tomorrow, I will be attending an Upper Kings River Authority meeting in Fresno, and I was gonna take the ethics training tomorrow too, but I realized we, I think I still may, but I'm trying to think, I think I've got a conflict, but otherwise, I will be doing that. And then, there's a, we have a San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board meeting on, on Thursday in Fresno. The thing of, maybe of some interest there is that two of our longstanding members, Judy Case from Fresno County, and Tony Barba from Kings County, will be going off of that board, they have both served on the board longer than I have, when they're leaving, I will be the senior member on that board, not the oldest, but the senior serving member. And that's all I had to report. One last thing, at ten o'clock on Saturday morning, the Diniva Sports Complex Center will, will have its dedication, which will be a great attribute for the community of Diniva, thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
No, I was just thinking, as you were commenting about being the senior member, I think it might take me a while to become the senior board member of any of these groups that I'm on.
You're getting there, working away.
I do feel older, but, yesterday, the community of Allensworth had a community meeting in order to talk about infrastructure needs in the community, discuss some of the issues they're having, and I appreciate those county staff members, Dennis Lehman attended, as did Hector Ramos. They're doing a lot of work that really helped them clean up the community, and also address some of their different infrastructure needs, including the road department. They really would like to see economic development happen in Allensworth, but in order to have economic development, we have to address a lot of the different issues that the community is facing right now, predominantly substandard housing, and a lot of issues with the roadwork, and eventually, we will update the Hamlet Plan, and that will have a very positive impact on that community. And then last week, most of you probably saw or heard that the city of Tulare had a joint meeting with, City Council of Tulare had a joint meeting with the Board of Public Utilities discussing their water concerns within the community, and the city is allocating an additional million dollars out of their general fund in order to improve their water infrastructure, and hopefully get to the point where they're going to be able to provide the residents of Metheny Track with the opportunity to connect to the city water system at their cost, so that should be good news going forward, and hopefully, we will continue to partner with the city of Tulare to help them achieve that goal for the residents of Metheny Track. And lastly, I hope everybody has, this is our last board meeting of the year, I hope everybody has a safe and wonderful, healthy holiday season, and we will then see you in 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay, I have a, a number of things to run through, last week, a few of us attended the Tulare County Association of Realtors Annual Installation of Officers banquet. Wednesday evening, I also attended the Moody Grove Master Plan Open House, was very, I think, very well attended, and I wanna commend staff on doing such a good job and being well-prepared, having enough materials there for people to look at, it was, I think, a very productive meeting. Friday evening, I actually worked at the Christmas tree auction, behind the tables, working the sign auction, had a great time doing that. This afternoon, at four PM, our District Attorney, Tim Morton, will be sworn in, in these chambers, and I believe most of the supervisors are planning on being present at that swearing in at four o'clock. This Thursday, I will be at, in Lindsay, at the Tulare County Association of Governments Employee Workshop and Appreciation Day, this Thursday evening, there's the Ham Radio Operators Group for Tulare County that meets here on a monthly basis, is going to have their holiday potluck, and I'll be attending that. By way of information, at eleven thirty, the Board will be attending the Tulare County Farm Bureau Luncheon, I believe most of us are attending that, so if we are still conducting business, we will recess at eleven thirty to attend that event. At ten AM, we are expecting a call from our outside council in regards to an item that is in our closed session agenda today, Madam Council, that item agenda number would be?
A.
So, item A, so around ten AM, when we receive the call, because of our council being in negotiations in another city, we will take a brief adjournment and return at that time from closed session.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's item D.
D is in David, okay, D is in David. Okay, and that concludes, so if, at approximately ten AM, if you, regardless of where we're at in the agenda, we may adjourn abruptly to go to closed session, and then, same thing, at eleven thirty, if we're in the middle of business, we will go into recess to attend that event. Okay, that having been said, we will now move to item number two, the announcement of the Movember Mustache Contest winners, like to call for Lupe Garza, our Health and Human Service, who is going to do a PowerPoint presentation with, I believe, some before and after pictures. And I, I'm a little hurt, I sent my before and after pictures in, and they looked the same, so they didn't use them.
I, I wanted to be a judge, not a contestant, cause I knew that my facial hair was kind of lacking at the end of the month, so.
Good morning, members of the Board, my name is Lupe Garza, I'm the Benefits and Wellness Manager for Human Resources and Development, and this is Kelly Barker, our HR analyst. We would like to acknowledge the winners of the first annual Movember Challenge. As part of the county's wellness program, November was designated as Men's Health Cancer Awareness. The goal was to wa- to raise awareness of the health risks that face men, and to take preventive measures against prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health problems. In recognition of men's health, we launched the first Movember Challenge. County employees were encouraged to grow a mustache during the month of November. They were asked to start with a clean-shaven face on November first, and then submit a before and after picture at the end of the contest. Women were also encouraged to participate by challenging the men in their lives. Movember was about bringing back the mustache, having fun, creating conversations, and awareness of, on men's health. I am happy to report that ten county employees participated in this event and submitted their before and after pictures. In lieu of time, we have placed the pictures on two slides. So there's the first four, before and after, the next four. And, the Board members reviewed all of the pictures in advance, and the consensus was to award two finalists with the best mustache. Both winners will receive a gift basket containing mustache-related items, a one-year subscription to Men's Health Magazine, a fi- and a five-day free group training with Body Effect Wellness, all made possible by donations from staff and discount vendors. I would like to invite Harry Hansel and Jose Rizalas to come up, and Supervisor Cox, please.
No, I, I started with a clean slate, so.
Turn, turn around, I think we need to have a group decision here, okay.
So, the second place winner was awarded to Harry Hansel, who's a Self-Sufficiency Counselor with HHSA, and works at the Tulare Works Visalia District Office. And our first place was awarded to Jose Rizalas, who's the Administrative Specialist with HHSA, and works at Government Plaza Visalia.
Hey Denise, would you dim those lights a little bit?
We would like to thank everyone that participated in this spec- in this special event.
Mr. Chair, can I make a, a comment real quick, or a question? Jose and Harry, before you guys go, I hope that your mustaches were the subject of conversation or questions during, at some point during the month?
Yes, I had a lot of questions about whatever you do.
Thank you, Jose, Harry, same thing? Well, you know, that, that's really great to hear, and, you know, obviously, you probably couldn't tell if I was still growing my mustache or not, but I too did grow one, and it was definitely the subject of many conversations, people asked me, why the heck would I have that, and then I turned over to Gene and asked why he has his still too, but anyways-
Most of the questions were, what is that?
Yeah, what, what is that, is that a caterpillar, yeah, but anyways, the, the whole point of the month is really to bring awareness to men's health, like you went over, and it was something that I really kind of took under my wing, as being as involved with health as I am in various committees and things, and really appreciate the, the ten county employees that volunteered and participated in the increased awareness for the month, and I hope that it will continue to grow. I wanna thank Rhonda and Lupe and all the HR staff for working together to put this contest together, I do think that there are many benefits that will be seen, it may not be right now, but it will be down the line from these increased conversations, so I really appreciate all that you did, and keep up the great work, look forward to next year, and maybe I might be a contestant, we'll see. A little biased, but, you know, we'll see, thank you very much.
One of the comments I did hear was, why didn't you wash your face this morning? That's why I don't participate, I just, not enough facial hair. Well, great, well, thank you very much for participating, I was excited to see the applicants come in, and aged myself, because I said, hey, that's a great-looking Fu Manchu, and none of my staff knew what that was. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is public comments, anybody wishing to address the Board on an item that is not on today's agenda? You would please use either mic, step forward, state your name and address for the record, anybody wishing to speak during public comment time? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our consent calendar, item number twenty-five is being pulled.
Mr. Chair, can we please also-
And also going to, and that's not, that's going to come back at a later date, and we are going to pull item number thirty-three for separate discussion, any Board members wishing to pull any additional items? Members of the public wishing to pull a consent calendar item for separate consideration? Seeing none, we'll entertain the balance with one motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the balance of consent calendar.
Moved by Vanderpoel, seconded by Innes, please cast your votes. And it is unanimous, thank you very much, we'll go to item number thirty-three.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if we're gonna have a separate presentation on this, but I wanted to make sure that this was pulled, because I know that we've had several issues with zones of benefit in Tulare County, and them not necessarily paying their way, and paying the cost of providing the service, so I wanted to pull this for a separate comment and a consideration by the Board.
And if, well, before you make your presentation, Mr. Spata, one of the questions I think I had, that was passed on to you, is are we just creating another entity to draw off of our revolving loan account that only revolves one way?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. CAO Council, yes, there will be a presentation, but it will be very brief to try to focus on what the concerns may appear to be of the Board, and, Mr. Chairman, your question is very well taken. The matter very briefly before you is a proposed, it's a middle of an application to the United States Department of Agriculture to assist the area of Monson with respect to a pretty severe water quality and water supply problem that this affected area is, is suffering. And the essence of this proposed application is not to do a planning study, it's not to do bottled water, it, but it's really tried to get some infrastructure into the ground to try to address the problems, the water problems that may be out there. Now, with regard to your specific question, the USDA has expressed a concern that there has to be an appropriate government structure in order to suitably administer this outcome. And the government structure, and it may not be a government structure per se, it's a funding mechanism, it's a zone of benefit, it's not creating a new district, or a special district, or anything like that, but for the sake of discussion, it is a government structural approach to deal with how to regulate the funding and operations of this particular water system. Zone of benefit idea, concept is being proposed, and to be sure, there have been problems in the past with regard to administering the zones of benefit. It's a Hobson's choice, if you will, on the one hand, in order to try to deliver effective water and wastewater infrastructure to these affected disadvantaged communities, we have to move forward, but the implementation of this type of system is going to be a stark fiscal reality that we have to contend with. The commitment has to be looking forward, not looking backward, but looking forward, that these residents who are enjoying the special benefit from these improvements have to pay their way with regard to it, and if they don't pay their way, then appropriate action needs to be taken in the interest of fairness and justice, not only to the people who are paying, but to the county residents as a whole. So, as I say, we do have a difficult choice, we have to move forward, because these disadvantaged communities are suffering, this is a way to do it. RMA staff has, has exercised Herculean efforts working with the CAO to try to bring something to the table, to move these problems forward. Zone of benefit is being considered, but after further discussion in the last few days with regard to this, we discussed internally, and we'd like to make it very clear to your Board, to the CAO, that the mere submission of this application will not commit the, the county to the zone of benefit, but we're submitting the application, let's see how it goes, and then we can exercise our discretion down the road after further analysis, if this is the way the Board wants to go. This is not a do or die commitment today, what's before you is a submittal of a five-hundred-thousand-dollar application to do something, to get something into the ground. We would welcome your support, RMA, working with the CAO will protect this Board, protect this county, but in order to move this forward, this is something that we would have to do.
Here, just, just, just a comment, thank you, that really clarified a lot for me, Mike, I, I'm glad that this doesn't commit us to that, because I, I really believe that the, the power in these CSDs belongs closer to the people, and not necessarily with the, the Board of Supervisors being the, the body, I think it's more effective when a Community Services District or some type of even more local form of governance exists, because I think that that will, that, that has the potential to help for a healthier system. And, and another thing I'm really glad to see is that this isn't a study, this is actually gonna be infrastructure that's gonna go into the ground, and so hopefully, we can, first of all, be awarded this grant, but then navigate through the different governance issues, so that we can end up with a system that's governed by the people that benefit from it, and that also pays for itself, so, thank you very much, appreciate it.
If I might, if I might make a few comments, one is that, this isn't, we see this as, I've been engaged in many conversations with the Alta Irrigation District, with the community, this is a community that fortunately is not like East Porterville in the sense that it's a smaller issue, it's the same problem, there is no system in the ground in this, in this community. But we're dealing with about thirty residences as opposed to the hundreds of residences that there are in, in East Porterville. This is a, the, the approach here is to deal with an interim problem of having inadequate water and wat- and some real water quality issues that will provide a well that will be able to, people will be able to access to fill tanks, so they can have, it won't necessarily be potable water, but it will definitely be water they can use to flush their toilets and, and keep them in their homes. The goal is to use the funds to try to also put in infrastructure that will ultimately provide for a system in that community, and working with RMA, we can use, we, we can do this on a quick basis by using our own rights-of-way on, on public roads to, to install the kind of piping that would then serve an immediate need, but also serve a future need, and there's two different projects that are even now working forward at the same time, and one of the reasons I'm very supportive of this is that I would be very concerned, as I know my other members of the Board are, about just creating another zone of benefit, and having this sort of ongoing problem we've had in so many other places, and it's like, once you have it, how do you, how do you get, move away from it? There are two things happening right now, one is a, as a study is being done, conducted, to look at consolidating, putting together Monson and Sultana, Sultana has a C, a C, I'm sorry, Community Service District, it's a Community Service District now, so they are looking at, at putting them together. And, and what we put in the ground now will work towards that end, so in other words, we're allowing, this funding can help to fund another project, and then above and beyond the, the Sultana project, which would connect these two communities, is a surface treatment facility plan that would incorporate Monson, Sultana, as well as Cutler, Orocy, East Orocy, Yedam, and Seville, all under one, one service provider. So, I, I am very confident that in this situation, we're, we are looking at a short term, and I realize short term is a little different in government, but speak, but probably within the next two to three years, in the bond that was passed by the voters of California, the water bond, there's a twenty million dollar allocation, which is really aimed at the surface treatment facility project, so these, these projects are moving forward, and one of the things we, one of the benefits we've seen of the drought has been the ability to move things forward much more quickly than they've ever been able to move in the past, so I feel very confident going forward that we're not gonna be in a situation like we- we have been in the past with these type of zone of benefit things and people not paying their fair share, because this is gonna move beyond that very quickly, I believe.
Any other question down here?
No, but I'm very supportive of this project also because this is just a step in the consolidation effort that we're trying to do in that whole region.
Couple more quick questions, who owns the system? If it's built up and done, who's gonna own it?
Well, that's gonna be the government structure issue with regard to it.
And let's say the folks vote to not accept governance of that system.
Well, at this point, this is in the application stage, and part of, part of this process is going to be to identify the ultimate government structure. I think ideally, in the staff report, it's indicated that ideally, this would connect to an independent Community Services District or Special District, in which case then it would be owned and operated by a separate and independent public entity other than the county.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just looking at forty, it's actually forty homes, approximately forty, I'm looking at the forty homes, and I'm trying to understand how you can divide the cost of annual maintenance amongst forty people for something like this, and if something breaks, it's not like replacing a pump on a well on your property, it's, you know, it's much larger, it's on a lot larger scale than that. So, I mean, that's, my concern is that, you know, once I think these forty folks find out that their cost may be well over a hundred dollars a month just for maintenance of this thing, I, you know, and I don't know what it would be, I'm just wondering, you know, what have we done or what will we do to let the residents know, this is what your cost is gonna be? And before it's in the ground, you know, because, I mean, I'm trying to be overly cautious here because I don't want another one of these zones of benefit where they just throw their hands up and say, we're not gonna give you any more money, we're gonna sign the petition, tough luck, you know, you county, you put it in, you take care of us, and you take care of us forever.
RMA is very mindful of that, two things I just wanna emphasize, number one, this is interim, this is a step towards a permanent solution, and the permanent solution, as we envision today, would be to turn it over to another entity, another public entity other than the county.
And if I might add to that, that's right, and also, we're looking at, this is not, this is a well that'll be on the scale of something like we put in at Seville or even on a smaller well, so this is not going to be one of your multimillion dollar type of wells that we're putting in when you think about public water systems, this is an interim step. The well would probably have a utility after it's all said and done, is a backup type of a well or a supplemental type of a well, but it's not gonna be a well that you would think that we would normally construct, like we're looking at putting in at Seville and Yedam, for instance, which would be a large multimillion or a hundred, very expensive type of a well, this is not that kind of a well. Actually, so what we're looking at here, I think it really will be operational expense, we're putting new pipes, new wells, everything will be new in the ground, so all we're looking at is an interim period of time to get people past this immediate drought situation and connect it to a bigger system, then you'll have economies of scale, you'll be able to have more people paying into the system. If it were just this entity by itself, I agree with Mr. Cox, that would be a very problematic situation because it would not be cost-effective to do so. You have to look at this as a small part of a much larger, much larger problem.
And I do, you know, like Supervisor Ashida mentioned, we've been talking about tying these smaller communities in, I'm very supportive of that, but I'm more supportive of seeing them step up and take responsibility instead of, again, just throwing their hands up and saying, it's not ours, it's yours, you fix it, you take care of it, we'll continue to give you our, in most cases, we'll continue to pay our monthly bill, but that's it. So, that's my concern is that, and I've got faith in staff that you can go out and make that happen, so I'm gonna support this because I know there is a bigger plan, you know, I just wanna be heard that, you know, I don't wanna see, you know, any more draws on this revolving fund because it's general fund money, that means every taxpayer living in the city, in a city somewhere in Tulare County, is subsidizing these other folks, and I just don't wanna see that continue. So, that's really all I had to say about, I'll support it, just wanna make sure that, you know, staff is well aware that, you know, I wanna, I wanna make sure that this doesn't end up being another drain on everyone else that lives in this county.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This is approval to apply for the grant.
Yes, sir.
We have to approve accepting the grant.
That's correct.
At a later date, and I share Supervisor Cox's concerns because there's no free lunch.
Well, yes, sir, there is.
Well, I'm sorry, but I share Supervisor Cox's sentiment that we cannot afford to put more systems online to be subsidized by the general fund, so hopefully between the time we get the grant application and an approval, that we can come to some type of an agreement with Monson, the forty residents, on how they're gonna cover their share of the cost or the management, more than anything, well, just as much as the cost, is the management side. So, they'll have to organize within themselves to manage their own water system.
And hopefully, it's only for an interim period, because I think that the goal of consolidating into a larger system to eliminate several issues amongst several small CSDs is a noble goal that I think we all support, and I think they'll ultimately get there, and especially since it's new infrastructure, hopefully the cost won't be too, too high.
But they still have to come to a management decision, no matter what happens, even if, when we go to the larger consolidation.
And that will have costs.
Totally, and unfortunately, there's no incentive for them to do that because we continue to dump money in and not require those folks to pay their full share.
I will just indicate, make sure that the chairs are aware, there is no system here, these people have not, they have, it's all individual wells and septic systems, one of the, and one of the goals is to get these people on a system because if everybody invests in wells, then they won't want to invest in a system, which they'll leave us with the problems of water quality as far as, you know, this is one of our highest water quality nitrate problems that we've had in the county. So, this is a solution that has many benefits, one of being eliminating that individual need of wells on individual lots, and then also consolidation, and, believe me, I believe that the only solution for this whole issue that you're referring to of people not paying their fair share is consolidation so we have an economy of scale that is a much broader base than this individual community. If we put them all together, now it's one water test, and it's, you know, one governance, and we can really bring the cost down per person.
I agree with you a hundred and ten percent, but what I'm seeing right now is there's no incentive for them to become one.
Got a fish or cut bait?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
So, let's fish.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you. In preparing for this meeting today, if the board is inclined to feel more comfortable, I did develop some very brief language to add to requested action item number one, and that would be after the item finishes, comma, with the proviso that the submittal of this application does not commit Tulare County to accept the funds if the grant is awarded.
Right.
If you would like, we could add that to the resolution so it's very clear.
I believe, I don't have a problem with that because I believe it's implicit anyway, but that's not a problem.
Can you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Worley, second by Ashida, please cast your vote, and it's unanimous, thank you, Mr. Spata. Okay, we will now move to our timed items, our public hearing items. Item, we will take up item number five first, there has been a request to continue this item to January sixth, is that correct? Denise, January sixth, is that the date we're looking at? So, we are going to remind folks the public hearing remained open from our last meeting, the public hearing continues to remain open. If there is anyone that would like to address the board at this time, we do have a court reporter present, so if you'd like to address the board in regards to item number five, which is a request from the treasure tax collector to continue the public hearing from October twenty-eighth regarding the denial of the appeal filed by Mary Lou Lopez regarding an adult-oriented business license. Anyone wishing to make a comment on the record at this time? Seeing none, we will keep the public hearing open, they will remain open until January sixth, we'll entertain a motion to continue to such time.
Motion to continue to January sixth.
Motion by Worley, second by Ennis, please cast your votes, and it is unanimous, thank you. We'll now take up public hearing item number four, request from our fire department to conduct public hearings for fire hazard abatement cost recovery.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board, my name is Cindy Allen, and I'm a fire inspector for Tulare County Fire. Tulare County Fire is requesting the board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the office of the county recorder as a lien. The contractor's cost plus administrative fees came to a total of $3,229.50 for cleanup of four parcels throughout Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place such cost of the county, excuse me, on the county tax roll as special assessment. Last, we request the board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, the parcel analysis. Contractor's cost came to $1,837.50, administrative fees came to $1,392. Do you have any questions for me this morning?
Any questions, staff? On general, how big are these lots? I'm looking at the, is the contractor's time include travel time there and back? I mean, are these big lots or are these small lots?
These lots that we cleaned this time, most of them, because we only had the four, let me go ahead and take a look real quick.
Apologies, I should've got you that question earlier.
That's okay, I don't mind. Okay, out of the four, all of them were under five acres.
Yeah, just, you know, I've plowed weeds under before, and five acres, you know, it does take a few hours, but it seems like you could avoid, you know, these other costs if you just took care of your weeds yourself, it's unfortunate.
It is, very unfortunate.
So, this is a public hearing, anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Move for approval.
Moved by Ennis.
Second.
Second by Ashida, please cast your votes, and it is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now take up item number six, public hearing requests from RMA to hold a public hearing and certify, I'm gonna scan down here, the declarations for the Traver Community Plan update, inclusive of a general plan amendment.
Good morning, Mike Washam, RMA Planning, just wanted to kinda set the stage a little bit before Aaron does his presentation on this community plan update. Lots happening in Traver recently, there's eleven new homes going in, there's been safety improvements done at the school through work with, in association with Measure R and TCAG, some sidewalk improvements, a new curb and gutter for a bus stop for the school, some safety driver feedback indicators at the crosswalk to alert drivers of their speed, so there's been a lot of improvements going on. There's a new grant for a forest mainline sewer down Merritt, complete streets policy was just approved, and undergrounding of the utilities along Merritt as well. The Traver Community Plan implements the recently adopted general plan of the county, the housing element SB 244, and healthy community strategies, the plans, and it plans for infrastructure improvements, further streamlines project and grant applications in the benefit to increase development opportunities in the community. The RMA was committed to a substantial community outreach in this process, meetings began last February, there has been over ten meetings held in the community, at board, school board meetings, walking the streets, street audits, walkability audits, as well as meeting with the business development community in the community. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Aaron to do the formal presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Cox, supervisors, CAO, council, I'm the chief planner with Tulare County RMA. The Traver Community Plan in regards to general plan consistency, for the record, there is no changes to the adopted urban development boundary or the open space element. What we did do for environmental and for land use studies was use the general plan 1.3% growth rate, which is consistent with the RTP and the Rena numbers projected by TCAG. We use these numbers for a development suitability index, which you'll find in the community plan update, so we are satisfied, there's no reason to extend the urban development boundary at this time. We have updated the zoning code and analyzed this pretty thoroughly, including under Section sixteen for by right uses, and included a mixed-use overlay to improve some efficiency in policy decisions. As noted, there are changes to Section sixteen, allowing more uses by right versus having to go through the use permit process, and we also wanted to verify and make sure that our circulation element is functional within the Traver community, so we did verify that it does comply with Section 13.7 roadway functional classification systems. And as Mike noted, you did adopt the complete streets program in September for the Traver community, and this is also in line with the policies within the general plan that look at the complete streets and multi-modal approach. By right zoning, what we've done is looked at Section sixteen and all the use permits that would be required under Section sixteen and made those by right. There will be some limitations in regards to the California Environmental Quality Act, so basically if there's no or minimal environmental or land use impacts on adjacent uses, then those uses will be allowed by right. We do reserve the right to look at these applications for significant effects, so if they have an environmental adverse land use effect on adjacent properties that would necessitate mitigation measures, then they'll be required to go through the traditional use permit process. We also have included a mixed-use overlay zone. This allows a mix of residential, commercial, and light industrial uses within one property. It promotes flexibility in policy decisions, it is a great economic development tool with a variety of potential which we have not been able to, which we will see the benefits of in the future. It will decrease vehicle miles traveled, and it will definitely increase infill development as sites will be able to use multiple different uses on one parcel or a group of parcels. As far as infrastructure, unlike a lot of community plans, what we did do is an in-depth infrastructure analysis, we did look at water very thoroughly, we talked to Tito Bolling, the private purveyor in the area, and worked with Provost and Pritchard. As you can see on our mitigated negative declaration, there was an in-depth water analysis, and most, for the most part, there is adequate capacity up through, at a 1.3% growth rate through 2030. It will require that conservation measures be implemented on all future housing, and that they will need to, if they grow past that, look for other surface water sources or look to other wells. As Mike noted, we do have a grant, we're awarded $1 million for a new trunk line down Merritt, that will increase development potential along Sixth and Merritt, and we're already looking how to hook up some of those uses that are coming in these days based on this community plan. We have a proposed drainage plan in this, in this program, and that will provide a detention basin, and it looks at pipes basically throughout the community, but mostly down Merritt. As Mike noted, there is an undergrounding power project down Merritt as well that we've incorporated into this project, and mostly we've looked at the roadways themselves on Sixth and Merritt in regards to pedestrian and bicycles, and through the, and through the complete streets program, we have supplied 30% designs for both Merritt and Sixth Street. So, the complete streets policies, our general plan did adopt quite a few complete street-like policies that we've utilized for our complete streets in Traver, Goshen, and Pixley. for our complete streets in Traver, Goshen, and Pixley pretty consistently. Mostly we're looking at safe routes to schools like projects here. For Merritt, Sixth Street, we looked at it from an economic development perspective, and we allowed the business owners in the area pretty much to design what they'd like to see out in front of their frontages. But for the most part, Sixth Street would include sidewalks and bike lanes, and as you can also see, the red lines there, those are secondary safe routes to school projects that have been anticipated in this community plan and the complete streets program. We are looking at, as I said, bike lanes from Sixth to Canal on Merritt, and we heavily looked at transit, and we'd like to improve the transit stop at Church and Merritt, which is currently pretty much on a power pole with a little sign on it. So the major changes to the land use plan itself are not many. The general plan does have a mixed-use designation. The areas on the right-hand side here in gray will be changed from their commercial or industrial uses to the gray mixed use, as you can see, and for the public there. So that's one of the major changes that allow much more flexibility in the uses out there, and in addition, we did take what was previously residential reserve areas, and it's kind of a de facto position we take in our community plans. If it's agriculture, we do change it to residential reserve when the UDB was adopted in 1990, and we are changing that to a residential land use, as you can see, for all that area to the north there as well.
If I might, just very quickly, Aaron, that piece of property that he just was looking at, a portion of that is where we already have already removed a section which will provide the housing for the 11 self-help projects that are located there. Also, as a point of reference, in the Traver plan of the 1880s, that piece of property was zoned for development in the 1880s, so it's taken a while for it to get to where it is today, but this shows you, progress is being.
Yes, we've talked to the landowner, he came to our last meeting, he's very happy with this, and they would look to move forward to building out that as residential. Again, as far as zoning, and this is one of the major changes to the zoning district map, including this mixed-use overlay. As you can see on the right here, we are incorporating a mixed-use overlay, this design diagonal hatching here shows where that would be located. We really focus on Sixth Street as the real corridor for economic development. Merritt also has secondary potential, there are existing mixed uses out there already, so this will bring some of those buildings into compliance. But really Sixth and Merritt, we see as the future, and rightfully so, the major economic development corridors. So those are the major changes. In addition, we've re-zoned the properties we just discussed to a medium-density residential, so there'll be flexibility, there won't be stuck at a low-density residential, which will greatly increase, as we said, decrease vehicle miles travels, increase infill potential. It is noted, as we stated, that there is a, the ownership was interested in moving potentially residential in this area. We've also heard from other business owners throughout the community of wanting to move forward on projects almost immediately, and a little bit of writing the coattails to this project for environmental and for land use changes. So going through this process with us, they're right in line to begin development immediately. So this is the ultimate final zoning ordinance map that would be created by this board and would be adopted. So with that, I'll move on to the sequo analysis. We did, through the mitigated negative declaration, look through hydrology, we looked at traffic, we looked at bio and cultural, this is probably the most robust environmental document done for a community plan to date. In regards to hydrology, like I said, there are future limitations on water, we are not at capacity now, but, you know, looking out to 2030, we can get there. So we look at basically five conservation measures and a sixth measure to basically look for future water sources, whether surface or underground. We did a traffic analysis for the community, they do not exceed level of surface C, that is good. In the future though, right on Merritt and where the freeway access is, they should be okay, they haven't tripped any thresholds even in our 2040 model, but that's something the community needs to continue to stay aware of. We did biological and cultural analysis for the community with the typical standard mitigation measures provided in the mitigated negative declaration. We did an in-depth air quality and GHG analysis, looking at both the existing businesses out there and for future vehicles, and we did not find that tripped any thresholds. And as stated, most of the uses along the corridor are commercial, so we shouldn't have any residential air quality or GHG issues into the future. Implementation, looking at some of the design plan elements, we did discuss stormwater retention, that is a high priority for this community. We did talk about, as far as the market study and analysis, the industrial and commercial promotion by the freeway, including talking to the business owners and their future plans for expansion. One of our main goals is to improve the bus stop along Merritt. We did look at through complete streets sidewalks, and that has been fully analyzed fiscally, and as far as we have 30% designs in place to move forward on. We did look at streetlights along Merritt Drive. We discussed the mixed use along Merritt Drive, that'll be implemented as soon as this board approves this document, so any people wanting to come forward can come forward immediately. We also want to look for gateway signs along Merritt Drive to help improve the image of the community. We want to utilize all the strategies we had in the market study to promote business in the area and absolutely promote Bravo Farms and any truck stop theme uses along street, along Sixth. So with that, that completes staff's report. If you have any questions for me, these are the recommendations.
Any questions?
For our comments, Chairman, I just want to thank staff for their hard work and bringing this forward, this is part of our general plan, the idea of the development along this 99 corridor. This is a community that's been neglected for many, many years, and so it's just very gratifying for me to see that we're moving forward, and there's a school on this property, in this area, if you look at the boundaries, they make a lot of sense, it's very compact. And if you've not stopped at Bravo Farms and the truck stop that exists there now, I really encourage you to do so, it's amazing the kind of activity that's there, the people that are drawn in there, I mean, it's a unique situation for us, this community is separated by a significant distance between Goshen and Kingsburg, and so it's in a unique position along the 99 corridor to be able to attract that highway business of people coming off the freeway to get gas up, to buy a hamburger, and provide jobs for the people in that community, and so I'm just very, very pleased, and I want to thank the staff for their hard work and bringing it here today, and I know the community very much appreciates it. Thank you.
I've kind of considered this area the Casa de Fruta of Tulare County Drive, I mean, it's because it is a place you can stop and do those things. What I'm happy about to see is that it provides some cleanup, you know, it cleans up some of the non-conditional uses that are there, so we're changing the zoning, we're fixing those things in one, you know, in one sweeping motion instead of addressing it a parcel at a time. So I appreciate that because this does clean up several issues, I look forward to us doing this in many more communities. We will now open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item today, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to address the board or pat staff on the back? Okay, seeing done, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that motion with a pat on the back. Great job.
Moved by Vanderpool. Please cast your votes, and it's unanimous in favor, thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, we'll now move to our first untimed item, item number 48, request from Resource Management Agency to find the bid submitted by JT2 Incorporated DBA Todd Companies, or Todd Companies Visalia California, is non-responsive and rejected, and then the rest of that paragraph. Mr. Spata. So that folks will remember, if our outside counsel does call during the next few minutes, we are going to adjourn or recess, so to close session, so we can take that item up with our outside counsel. Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. CAO, Council, Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you is entitled, "The Authorization to Award a Contract: The Construction of the John J. Doyle Elementary School Safe Routes to School Project." In terms of the outline of this presentation, I'll first review and overview the protest, then we'll walk through the bid summary, project description, the project timeline, bid requirements, and analysis of the bids, comparison of the bids, the requested action, and potential alternatives. All right, after reviewing the special provisions proposal and contract, there are a number of questions that could be identified that could serve as a framework for consideration of this appeal. First, is the bid proposal by Todd Companies non-responsive? Two, are the discrepancies waivable? Three, if so, should the contract be awarded to Todd Companies? If not, should the contract be awarded to Dawson Maudlin? Alternatively, should all bid proposals be rejected? All right, in terms of the bid summary, you have here a table that identifies all the bids that were submitted. I should tell you that number eight from Pierce Construction was a late bid and was not excluded, however, it is identified there as being submitted at an amount of $206,435, but it's not for consideration. All right, with regard to the seven bids that were provided, the apparent lowest responsive bid is identified in row seven from the JT2 Inc., DBA Todd Companies, in the amount of $228,475. The next apparent lowest responsible bid would have been Dawson Maudlin Construction, that's row number one, in the amount of $228,798. After a comprehensive review by RMA Public Works, and after consideration of a protest that was filed by Dawson Maudlin, it was engineering staff's determination that the bid identified in number seven was irregular and thus non-responsive, and then the next lowest responsive bid was Dawson Maudlin Construction. Okay, dropping back a little bit, the project location is in the Porterville area, the two streets that are the subject of the Safe Routes to School Project are in East Orange Avenue and Success Drive, East Orange Avenue and Success Drive. This is an aerial that depicts East Orange Avenue, the blue line is where you'll see some of the asphalt work. Then over here on the next street, you see more asphalt work, you see some of the flashing beacons, the crosswalks, and so forth. All right, in terms of the project timeline, the project timeline, on October 7, 2014, the board supervisors authorized the matter to go out for bid. On October 30, there was a pre-bid meeting on November 13, opened, two weeks were given for potential bidders to submit their proposal. On December 16, which is today, the matter before you is to possibly consider the award of the construction contract. I should note that as of December 29, there is a milestone that RMA needs to meet in keeping with the Safe Routes to School program, in that they must award the contract in order to be consistent with Caltrans' timely use of funds requirements. This is also important because when we move forward with our next round of ATP grants, Caltrans will look at whether we are timely spending our funds as a factor for consideration. So there's a larger consideration to bear in mind. And then in mid-January, it is anticipated that this project would begin construction. All right, in terms of the protest timeline, just to give you background, and all the relevant documents are in your packet or were distributed as part of this hearing today. On November 13, the bids were open at 2:00 PM in the BOSS chambers. On November 18, RMA informed Todd of the bid irregularity by telephone. On November 18, RMA sent an email to Todd regarding bid item number 15, which we will go into, which deals with the asphalt for the project. On November 19, Todd requested the meeting with the board supervisors. On November 19, the same day, we, RMA received a protest letter from Dawson Maudlin, which was a contractor submitting a bid. On November 26, RMA sent a letter to Todd regarding the irregularity of the bid. On December 2, there was a telephone conversation between RMA and Todd, dealing with the protest, dealing with moving forward to the board, and there was a letter to that effect that was emailed. On December 10, the letter was received, or a letter was received from Todd dated 12/314, indicating its response to the claim that their bid was irregular. On December 11, Todd contacts the board supervisor's representative, who in turn contacts us, indicating that there was a request, possibly than attorney, for Todd would want to speak at the board meeting, and staff indicated there would be no problem whatsoever with that. On December 11, RMA emailed Dawson, providing the copy of the letter that was sent to Todd, which specified all the apparent discrepancies with regard to the bid proposal that was submitted by Todd. On December 11, there was a telephone conversation with Todd regarding a letter of December, December 10. And then finally, Todd makes a Public Records Act request, which is ongoing, where there was a question over the last 10 years, had the RMA or the county ever rejected a bid as being non-responsive for the types of unreadable or illegible discrepancies that appear to be apparent in this particular, and that is ongoing. Okay, here is the protest letter. Copy of that letter is in the staff report, you have a copy at your dais, but essentially there are a number of objections that were set forth in the protest. First, Dawson indicated that they protested the bid as being non-responsive on the ground that both the unit price and the item totals are unreadable and are unclear in almost every bid line, and thus should be deemed irregular. In addition, Dawson stated that the unit price and item totals are so illegible, it is impossible to determine if the arithmetic is accurate and cannot be reasonably summed up to match the total amount listed. But the next two paragraphs deal with an objection, whether or not the electrical contractor was adequately listed. Staff looked at that one and rejected that objection because as a Class A contractor, Todd is sufficiently qualified in order to address this type of, this part of the contract. But that objection, in staff's judgment, has no merit. Okay, Todd's response is that your letter, being RMA's letter, states our bid is non-responsive due to irregular and/or unreadable unit prices, prices and item totals. When looking further, the unit price and total item price are consistent. The county's difficulty in reading the line items on a bid is not listed in Section 3-1.01 as an unwavable failure when it comes to a bid being deemed non-responsive. In reply to that comment, the Todd Companies is correct, the types of discrepancies that are characterized as being non-responsive are wavable within the discretion of this board. Okay, turning now to some language contained or set forth in the special provisions proposal and contract at page P-4, and I'll just highlight the emboldened language. "In case of a discrepancy between words and figures, the word shall prevail." Moving further to subsection B, "If both the unit price and the item total are unreadable or otherwise unclear or omitted, the may be, the bid may be deemed irregular." Moving forward, the last paragraph in that same section, but on page P-5, it states, "The decision of the board supervisors respecting the amount of the bid or the existence or treatment of a discrepancy in a bid shall be final." Okay, this is a Excel spreadsheet that delineates very precisely the types of unreadable items around the bid, this is probably unreadable to you right now, however, it was contained in the staff report, it was furnished to the protester and the opponent, and it is before you today on the dais, so it is certainly readable in the sense that when you look at all of these discrepancies, there is an argument that the information is unreadable, illegible, and thus irregular. Okay, you also have a copy... You also have a copy of the bid proposal where this is what was furnished by, by Todd Companies, and when you look at it closely and you compare it to the Excel spreadsheet, the referenced items do appear, in staff's judgment, to be illegible and unreadable. Okay. Let's turn to item 15, which seems to be an important item with regard to this, this protest. Item 15 deals with the Class II aggregate base. When you look at the snippet of information that was extracted from the bid proposal on the top of this sheet, it appears in writing in the third column, moving left to right, it says 50 per cubic yard. And then when you go to the next to the last column, there is a number. It looks like either 5026 or 15026. And if you do the math, it would appear to be 15026 times 60, which gives you the 9,015. The last sense there. All right. But if you multiplied 50 times 60, it would not give you the 9,000. But the word is 50, the number appears to be unreadable, the language in the proposal is that the word controls over the number. Now, if you look at the second row, this is staff's calculation, well, what happens if it's $50 per unit, and what happens if it's $150 per unit? The difference is almost $6,000 as deduced by staff. So reduce the bid $6,000 to approximately $222,000 instead of the amount that was submitted.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Here. Don't we pay on these types of contracts for actuals used at the end of the contract anyways?
Yes.
And we use the, their, their number that they've provided as a unit price?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Also, you have at your dais, and this is just by comparison, the bid proposal that was submitted by Dawson. And as you can read from the paper copy that you have, it appears to be very clear. In other words, you can read the words, understand the words, and you can read the numbers, and you can understand the numbers. Okay. So let's compare, for example, Todd and Dawson. The earlier snippet, you can see the 50 per cubic yard, what looks like either 50 or 150, and then when you compare it to Dawson, in writing, you see $90 clearly written out times 60. 90 for the unit price is 50, $5,400. Okay. So to summarize again, to bring this to a conclusion, the apparent low bidder was JT2, Todd Companies, $228,475. The next lowest bidder was Dawson-Maudlin. In staff's judgment, respectfully submitted, they believe that the Todd Companies bid was irregular and thus non-responsive, and thus, staff moved to the next lowest bidder that was responsive, which was Dawson-Maudlin. Okay. The requested action that's in your staff report and also reflected before going to the alternatives is find that the bid submitted by JT2, Inc., DBA Todd Companies is non-responsive and rejected. Two, approve and award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Dawson-Maudlin, in the amount of $228,798 for construction of the Doyle Elementary School Safe Routes to School Project. And then three, authorize the chairman to sign the contract after review and approval is deformed by council and upon receipt of certificates of insurance and evidence that the contractor possesses a valid state license. And then finally, allow funds for contingencies in the amount of $22,880. Alternatives. Per the special provisions of the proposal, Section 3-1-1B7, your board has the discretion to reject any or all proposals, or you have the discretion to waive any discrepancy in a proposal and to reiterate the types of discrepancies that are put forth by staff are of the nature that are waived. That concludes our presentation.
Any questions of staff? As far as this? I know there was, last week, a request from one of the parties to speak with some board members. I know I turned that request down, had staff convey that. Anybody wishing to speak to this item? If you would, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Tom Lockwood. I am an employee of Todd Companies. And I, I don't know if this is typically done, but I had a, had a small, had a letter in a small packet, and I brought copies. I brought six copies.
Are you gonna pass them off to the clerk?
Okay, there you go. No, it's actually seven. Sorry. This is not what I typically do, so. The cover letter just kind of briefly outlines the history of Todd Companies and Todd Plumbing and kind of identifies further our stand in this particular situation. Do you want me to give you like five minutes or two minutes? Look over the letter? Okay. I'm the one that bid the job. I'm the one that filled out the paperwork that was submitted the afternoon that the bid was, was happening. We, when we bid these projects, we have what's a spreadsheet that is given to us typically earlier than 20 minutes before the bid opening. But in this case, we had it printed. We left our office. We came to the Board of Supervisors' location to bid the job, and the information was being written down and pulled off of our spreadsheet onto the handwritten form that we were given by the county to submit with the bid. And during that process, to make the timeline, is it at a time certain? If you're not there, your, your number's typically not read. So that's essentially what happened in this particular circumstance. So when I was there at the bid opening, there was a bid that was late that was read, which isn't typical, but when they read it, it was low, and, and the county did make the right decision to not award to a, a bid that was, that came in after the 2 o'clock deadline. But as far as, as the letter that the county had responded to about the unreadable and unclear, fairly subjective, seems fairly objective to my understanding, but the fact it was unreadable and unclear, yet we do have the numbers that the county extrapolated down that, that you've already seen, which shows our numbers that had some discrepancies and shows a new number, which is also lower, that would be still the, the low bid. And Todd Companies is willing to do the project for that lower number. You know, construction is, is like this. It, it happens in real time. It happens quickly. It was never our intent to come in at a, at a different number than the one that we actually wrote down, the one that was read at the bid opening, which with our numbers, if you look at what we were trying to do, you know, it just, it just seems like a real subjective determination to throw out a bid when, you know, the whole process is to, is to bid a job and have it be a competitive process. And when a low bid is given in a timely manner, and all the information is there other than making, you know, having some of it difficult to understand, seems to us to be counter to the whole process. Did anybody here have any questions?
I had a question. I'm trying to understand, are you saying that there was a limited period of time for you to fill out this form in the handwritten form, that you did not have adequate time to fill this form out?
Well, not, we had it, we had just as much time as anybody else had. What we ended up doing is getting on the road with the numbers to come to the bid opening, and we had, we had to just fill it out quicker than we would have liked to. A lot of times, when these bids go down, you have a bid runner that's at the opening and you call the numbers into them. We didn't, that opportunity, we just, you know, that was our fault. Things were moving that fast. And if you look at our, the subcontractors list, you'll also see that I actually changed one of our subcontractors just minutes before the bid opening. We got a late bid from a subcontractor that was cheaper than the, it, it just, it happens that way, you know? So we did have, we did have enough time, and we did make the bid opening. And when I was writing this information down, it was in, I finished it up in the parking lot on the, on the front of my truck as the bid runner was reading it. I mean, it's, it happens that fast. And I think we had a, I don't know, a minute and a half to spare. Anyway, that's, that's kind of where we are right now. You know, we're, we're, you know, we're really, it's unfortunate, and I, and I feel really bad about, you know, this, this happening. I've been in the business 40 years and never had this happen before, where I've had a project that has, is going to be passed over because of a, you know, it being unreadable or unclear what our, and I guess it would be what our intentions were. I don't, I don't know, or just because the, the words were spelled in a too quick a fashion, I guess.
Tom, where's your company base out of?
We're here in Visalia.
Great, thanks.
Other questions? Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? You see none for, for my personal disclosure, the, the process he explained is a typical process of bids of this nature. I, as a contractor for 25 years, I went through this myself, where, where subs or suppliers on purpose would hold their numbers until the very last minute, not wanting to show their hand. And I found myself several times with jobs that were in the several hundred thousand dollar range, waiting to the last few minutes to add that number in, into my bid, so I can sympathize with Mr. Lockwood on, on having done that many, many times myself. And I, when I took the sheet, there was only one number I really wasn't able to read, and it was that 50 that was highlighted by staff. So as I went through it, having filled out many of these myself, I was able to make out every number on that page, and the, the large discrepancy was one item, and staff did communicate with them if they would be willing to perform the project at the lower cost, and they affirmed that they would be. So, or, I mean, that, that kind of showed where I might be going. My thoughts might be going with this because I've been there many times, and I know that's the nature of the game. If there's a supplier that has to supply something, they might even try to find out what, you know, supplier A, B, and C are charging before they provide their bid to all of the bidders in that. And all of the bidders are required to, you go to a pre-bid conference, be on the bidders' list, so all suppliers know who's going to be bidding that project. So I tend to lean towards, you know, overlooking these few things because I've been there myself several times.
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna make an additional comment. You know, I, I really don't like the award of a contract being based on such subjective matters. I'd rather see it be objective and being on time and being the lowest responsive bidder on time and being willing to do the project at the lower amount of the most significant discrepancy in handwriting in the bid submitted. I think shows a lot that this contractor is really trying to rectify the wrongdoings of his handwriting in the parking lot. And the fact it's also a local contractor means something to me as well. That too is, you know, somewhat subjective, but being that his bid was the lowest to begin with in the bids that were submitted on time, I certainly would like to see the contract be awarded to JT2, Inc., DBA Todd Companies.
Other comments?
Well, yeah, I, I, I have a little different view of it, and that is, I looked at, and it looked to me like I was trying to read a doctor's handwriting for getting a prescription. I mean, I looked at it and I thought, this is ridiculous. I mean, why should our staff have to sit there and try to figure out what this is when it's illegible? I look, and you compare it to the other company that had the same timeframe to do the same work, and you can read every word of it, you can read every number of it, it's very, very clear. And I, I think things matter. I think handwriting matters. I think, you know, I mean, if, I, if you have things coming at the last moment, that's not the whole thing. I mean, if, the whole page appeared to be filled out with last minute, trying to scribbles, putting it in everything. I mean, if there were things they were waiting for, those could have been left at, to the very end, and then that could have been, that could have been, it wouldn't look like that. I mean, to me, it was like haphazard, putting this stuff down at the last possible moment, and everybody had the same timeframe. And I, I just don't think it's appropriate for, for our people to have to sit there with, and try to decipher the almost indecipherable. I, I, I don't have a problem with supporting the staff's position on this. I just think, you know, I mean, everybody had the same rules, everybody had the same timeframe, everybody had the same situation. This thing came in, and it's like, who can read this? I mean, you have to sit there with a magnifying glass and devote an, an ordered amount of time trying to read something which other people were able to do in a way that didn't require that. I just think that's, that's sort of rewarding some bad behavior.
Mr. Chairman, I also concur with Supervisor Worthley. I have terrible handwriting, and I know what yours looks like, so I know that you could read it.
I wasn't gonna say that, actually, about my handwriting.
But, but I concur with Supervisor Worthley. When you fill these forms out, our staff's not responsible, sit there with a magnifying glass. What you basically almost have to do is, it's legible. If you really study it, it's legible, but other than that, I, I support that your documents need to be clear when you submit for a bid.
My, my response to that would be if you look at the PowerPoint presentation where they actually show staff's calculations, staff was able to deduce what was there. And I read through the entire three pages, it only took me a few minutes. So thinking that that's an unreasonable amount, amount of time, I, I don't, I don't get that.
And unless, anytime you deal with a handwritten document that's not your own, you end up deducing it. The only time you don't is either when it's written by a woman, I'm not being sexist or anything, that's just my wife, her handwriting's much cleaner than mine, but when it's typed, it's a lot clearer. And at the end of the day, we still got to the, the bottom number, and that was the lowest bid that was submitted. And we have to remember, obviously, going out and rejecting all of these bids and going out and rebidding doesn't really seem like that's an option because it would jeopardize the product or our standing with Caltrans, and I definitely do not want to do that. And this is definitely an area that needs this project as well.
Counsel, this is not a four-fifths item, is it?
No, sir.
And I do want to say, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm fully supportive. We need to award, we don't want to reject all bids to go out to bid. We need to get this done today. So I, I'm, I will live with every decision of the board, but I, I think we do need to move forward today and award this contract.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, you don't have to reject, your options are not to accept staff's recommendation or reject all the bids.
But one of our options would be to reject all bids or go back out to bid. We don't.
Yes, sir. It was one of the alternatives, but it's not, you're not required to do that.
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion that we do not go with staff recommendation, and we actually award this contract to JT2, Inc., DBA Todd Companies for the amount actually that was mentioned in the packet that was submitted to us, ended up being the lower amount, $222,465.44. That is a $6,000 penalty to Todd Companies for their handwriting errors, and I think that that makes sense.
Move by Vanderpool, seconded by Innis. Cast your votes.
Yeah, so, so hit this button, it doesn't want to work.
You want to reset it, Denise, and we'll do it again? Okay, so reset, please cast your votes again.
Hold that one down on the left, on the left, yeah, that part. There you go.
Okay. The vote is Ashida no, Vanderpool yes, Cox yes, Worthley no.
Okay, the vote is Ashida no, Vanderpool yes, Cox yes, Worthley no, Innes yes. So, uh, the motion carries to award the project to, uh, to, yeah, J, I'm looking for the JT Two Todd, DBA Todd Companies.
For, for the dollar amount of two-hundred-twenty-two.
For the dollar amount of two-twenty-two, four-sixty-five, forty-four. Okay, we'll now move to our, uh, our last untimed item.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam, Madam Counsel, do we have a?
We have, we have our outside counsel available right now in your, in your board.
Okay, our outside counsel is available right now. We are gonna adjourn, I believe, for how, Kathleen, how long is this gonna take?
I hope not more than twenty minutes.
Okay, we should be back in less than twenty minutes to take care of this last item.
Should I turn off the mic?
Denise, push the button.
Where'd everybody go?
Okay, we are, we are back from closed session, we'll take up our last untimed item and our last open session item for the day, item number forty-nine, require, uh, request from the CAO's office to provide direction to staff in regards to our grand jurors per diem, I'll call it.
Good morning, Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. The item before you, um, is request to provide direction to staff, uh, as to which, if any of the proposed options should be, uh, used to modify our existing ordinance, one-dash-nineteen dash twelve zero five, with regard to, um, specifically the per diem of grand jurors. So, in nineteen ninety-nine, our existing ordinance code was adopted and set the per diem amount at ten dollars per day. In two thousand and one, Penal Code eight ninety changed that to a fifteen-dollar amount per day and that was, um, and that superseded our ordinance and that's the amount that went into effect at that time. And I should note that the ordinance was not updated to reflect that, so whether or not you choose to keep the existing ordinance or change it to a different amount, the dollar amount, per diem amount, will need to update the ordinance count to reflect, uh, whatever the decision is. Uh, this year, the grand jury requested that that per diem rate be increased to thirty dollars amount and on your agenda items, Exhibit B is sort of a quick analysis that shows, based on the thirteen, fourteen per diem days that were claimed, what those different amounts would cost on an annual basis, the amount that would need to be budgeted. And then Exhibit A was provided to show you the per diem amounts that were, um, that are offered in other counties throughout the state.
Question, Debbie, does, uh, I know some of the boards I sit on, they have a limited, they say, you know, there's so much per day with a limited number of days in the month. Is there a limited numbers of days in this?
No, there's not any limit and I actually, um, code these invoices when they come in, so it depends on the jury member, but some of them have per diem for almost every day of the month and that depends on, um, whether or not the-
Every working day, you mean?
Yes, yes.
Five days.
Yes, every working day. Um, because they, they work on different subcommittees.
Well, the one thing I noticed on this is they have a different, some counties have a different reimbursement rate for subcommittee meetings versus regular meetings.
Yes, three of them.
I would suggest the same, um, for us, is a two-tier. And, uh, you know, I, I think twenty dollars is adequate. Your lunches now will cost you about thirteen to fifteen dollars if you have a reasonable lunch and that inflation rate's going up faster than anything else is, uh, restaurant meal costs. So, I, I'm gonna go twenty dollars.
Uh, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Gene, associate CAO, um, uh, thank you Debbie for bringing this forward for me. Um, this is after discussions with the grand jury and, and their, uh, desire to expand their responsibilities, which the chairman of the grand jury will come up and share with you. Um, but it's also a recruitment tool to a certain degree. Uh, it's, it came to my attention that a majority of the members are from Visalia and they're trying to get folks from other, you know, unincorporated communities and, uh, and other cities to participate, not to take anything away from folks from Visalia, but...
I don't see anything wrong with that, actually.
Also, the, you know, over the last couple of years, the, the grand jury has, has somewhat, has, uh, reformed the way they do business, uh, especially with the, with the chair in the last two years prior to this gentleman. Um, there were, um, I think, I think folks, generally speaking, they're being held more accountable by the foremen's. Um, and they wanna expand their duties and you might wanna call, uh, the foreman up and, and get his take on, on this increase. I, I really didn't take a, you know, we clearly did make a recommendation, um, because we wanted to run it by the board, I think, I think, you know, twenty, uh, but you can see in Exhibit B, i- is a financial impact, so if we go from twenty to twenty-five, or, we're talking about thirteen, fourteen thousand for every five thousand doll, every five-dollar reimbursement increase. Um, I think, you know, twenty, twenty-five is, it sounds reasonable to me.
We, we do pay people mileage, right? So, in terms of people driving dis- greater distances, they get, they do get mileage, you get mileage reimbursement.
Yes, and I, I do believe that the jury foreman would like to s- address the board. Um, and, you know, I'm gonna let him answer how they feel about the time component of that versus the mileage.
I do have a request from Chuck White to speak to the board.
Good, Mr. White? Name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Chuck White, I live here in Visalia, at five fifteen North Atwood. And this year, I am the foreman of the grand jury, uh, and maybe next year too, don't know yet. Been asked already, but I haven't made up my mind. Anyway, most of the time, people, they have no idea what we do or the hours we put in, so I thought I'd let you guys know about how we work. And what it is, we, in our office, work to five hours per day. Everybody's in there, or every other day, they'll be in there. Then besides that, then, when our reports come out, that you can add another four hours at home, just writing those reports to get them ready, to bring them back before we get it through edit and the other, uh, general committee. Now, it takes a lot of time to doing that. And also, interviews, while we're working, we have interviews as far as Ponarosa, where these boards are working up there and we get complaints on them. So, we have to drive up there and see them, interview them, get names down there for we can find out who we can bring down here to our office to, uh, uh, question about it. I mean, we spend a lot, a lot of time doing that. People, most people, they laugh at us when we tell them what we get for the hours we put in. I mean, they think we're nuts, 'cause, I mean, I mean, we'll put in thirty, thirty-five hours a week at times and we tell them, oh, yeah, how much you get paid? Fifteen dollars? And, and they just laugh us right out of the room. I think it's so funny, you know, that we're missing some boats here, you know, to be in there doing that, but we have pride.
You notice we're not commenting on that part of that?
Yeah. And, you know, we have a bit of pride, what, pride what we do and that's why we're in there, it's pride for our city, for the county. We try to make things look good for them and keep everybody, everybody straight-lining honest on what we do, on the complaints we get. And now, it's something else different we, we got put in charge of this year, is our, last year actually, is our recruiting. Now, we are the head of, of recruiting now, where before the, the courts would pay and add in the newspaper and that was all they did and put a, a poster up in the courthouse. But now, we go out on our own time, there's more time, more hours, that we go out there and try to recruit people to sign up for the grand jury to give us some kinda nudity to all the people that's come in, you know, from different counties, not counties, but different cities. 'Cause right now, you look at our, our, who's on it, it's mostly two Larry and Visalia. The people from Porterville, they don't wanna drive over here for fifteen dollars and, you know, mostly in the fog or anything like that, I mean, they gotta be tempted more than that. 'Cause I had two people from Porterville start with me this year and they both dropped out 'cause of the driving for fifteen dollars from Porterville to here. They said it just wasn't worth it for them, that, you know, risked their life in that fog. And which I, I couldn't blame them. So then when we pull new names, we got people here, close to us here. And, uh, on this recruiting now, what we do, we go out to these Lions Clubs now, Rotary Clubs, and we go in there and we give talks about the grand jury and to get them to sign up, which we did last year and it really worked out good. We got all new members last year, this year, has never served before. And that's been a really good challenge with me and the two others that's been on the grand jury. Looked out, there's three of us foremen's that's on it this year, was able to work with all these new people. But they're very educated, very smart, they just, they shake their head every time we get that little money in, in the month, well, from all the time we put in.
Like jury duty.
Yeah, well, regular jury duty is a piece of cake compared to this. I mean, this, when we, when we sign up for this, you know, it's a full year. You know, you, once you get in there, you're not supposed to back out, you know, you gotta be dedicated to get in there to work that cheap in those hours. I mean, the hours is, I mean, it, any normal person would not do it. I mean, you guys have experience in these, uh, uh, meetings you guys go to, you know how much time it takes for you guys to go to these meetings and how many of them? And ours is just like that, it's just meeting after meeting after meeting. I mean, we were talking to sheriff's office one day, then we're at the DA's office another day, or we're at Bob Wally's the other day and, I mean, it just goes and goes for us. And, you know, they just, most people don't work that cheap, but we do. And, uh, but on this recruiting, when we're out there doing this, we also bring them in now, where before, the judge will interview them for five minutes, say, okay, you're good, you're not. But now he put us in charge of it. Now, we interview from thirty minutes to an hour. When we did our interviewing this year, it took us five full days, that's eight hours a day, just to interview the people that we got on our jury this year. And that just qualifies them to go to the judge, then the judge interviewed them a second time with us there, to pick the ones we got. And we do, I gotta admit, we got a dream team this year. Everybody just going crazy with it, or, I'm going crazy with it, and, you know, ex-foremen's, they is all picking on me 'cause I got the dream team, it's something that they never could have before. And so I, we felt that, you know, for all what we're doing and our hours, we was just hoping that you guys would give us a thirty-dollar raise, 'cause eventually, I don't think, that'd probably be the last raise that any of us will see going to the grand jury. We'd all be dead by the time they get another raise. So I was hoping to make just a one-shot deal right now to get us going down the road. Like I said, it'd be the last one we get for years, years, and years. I mean, if we go a long way, you can tell, like, two thousand and one, that's what, fifteen years? Guessing off the top of my head there, that, uh, without a raise. And there's nobody in this county that goes that long without an increase and pay, 'cause we're out there, like, you see, talk about the lunches. We go to these far places, lunch will cost, cost us ten dollars. So that day, we worked for five dollars all day, you know, for eight hours worth of work. And that just, people just don't see that. You know, what we do up there, like me, sometimes it costs me at the end of the month for the things I, I do for these people for the grand jury, 'cause we'll have a dinner or something and I'll buy it, uh, I'll bring in, uh, my own pocket, you know, from Subway on a Friday and it cost me seventy dollars. Boom, that, that took a whole weeks out of my pay, but, you know, something like that, you do. And, I mean, I wanna keep these people happy for they'll come back next year, this and that, so I'm going out a little extra this year for these people. But every year, we do have lunches on Friday, that's our big day where we have our guest dinner, this and that. Some of you guys know about it, 'cause you guys been there. And there's always eats after if you wanna hang around. And everybody tries to bring in a dish from their house, like a pot, that's what we try to do. But still, you know, you're buying that food, you're bringing it in, you know, and, like I say, just really appreciate the most to you guys, that you could see thirty dollars, 'cause I like to see that myself in my lifetime before I go. And I sure thank you guys for listening to me and putting this on the agenda, 'cause I'd never in a thousand years would thought we'd get this far. So, I appreciate it, thank you guys.
Okay, Gene, you gotta come in?
Yeah, I just wanna add some things. I think I've mentioned it to individual board members along the way, but in the last couple of years-
Any more questions?
The prior, sorry, the prior foreman, Mr. Morrison, is the one who really cleaned up, uh, the grand jury's act to a certain degree. He's the one who recommended that we get, they get, uh, computers, so they all have their own laptop computers, so they don't have to carry around large binders and, and that's problematic. Um, you know, we can also, we can address folks who don't wanna drive in, we can, we can work with our IT department- work with our IT department, potentially provide Skype services to the grand jury, that kind of makes sense in, in our county. So we've done a lot for this grand jury, to give them the tools, we want, we want a good, working grand jury. And Mr. Morrison, you know, put some rules in place, kind of ran off some people that were, I'd say, feeding at the trough to a certain degree, reading during meetings and what have you. We also provide Kleenex, which apparently wasn't being provided in the past. So, anyway, I just wanted to mention that, we've got a good working relationship with the grand jury, they, 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 they serve a public, a public need, and, you know, I recommend whatever, you know, certainly an increase, twenty-five dollars for a regular meeting, maybe fifteen for a subcommittee meeting, kind of makes sense to me, but I'll leave it to the preference of the board.
Mr. Chair, you know, one of the things that has changed too, and that is that although we've never paid for people to have their meals, but at the same time, there was a, not too many years ago, like the board, that would have been a tax deduction, so if they had to drive to a meeting and, and buy a meal to, as a lunch, as part of that, they, that would have been a tax deduction. Today, that's no longer true. So they either are gonna have to pay for it out of their pocket, or they're gonna brown bag it and bring something to eat, so the, I think that is a consideration. I, I think I'm just, I mean, I, I look at it, and, and for the amount of money, you know, when minimum wage is, is nine dollars an hour, I, I, I think thirty dollars an hour is still being, thirty dollars a day per diem is still being very generous, in the sense that people who do that are, are being very generous with their time. I don't want to say we're being generous so much as they're being generous with their time, 'cause that's a lot of time commitment for them to be putting in, and, and I think it will help maybe perhaps to attract more people to, to, to become members of the grand jury, I know that's an issue sometimes, getting people to do that, so I think I don't have a problem with going to the thirty dollars, because, you know, and then, we probably, we probably will look at this again for another five, some, just, some of the board will look at it five, ten years ago.
Other comments, Alan?
You know, I don't think there's a, a difference between thirty and twenty dollars as who's gonna serve on the grand jury. The grand jury has always been a, a community service, the people feel that they want to give, and they're not really there for the money, they're really there for the community service, but I do understand that they need to be reimbursed for their expenses. And I remember in the seventies, my uncle was on the grand jury in Tulare County, and it was just a matter of civic pride and wanting to do something back to the community, it's not a paid position. So, the way I look at it, I'm willing to pay for expenses, and I think twenty dollars is, gets you, probably you can eat at the vintage press for twenty bucks for lunch, and you're getting mileage, and I think thirty dollars is going past the point of giving, that gets, gets to the point of compensation, and I don't think the grand jury should be compensated. I really think they need to be reimbursed for their expenses, and maybe have a little extra in, in, in amount to hold over for a dinner or, or whatever, and I also think committee meetings can be arranged at times where I, I would recommend a fifteen-dollar committee meeting per diem. I think thirty dollars, you start to approach compensation versus public service.
I just had a, a quick question, and I know we can see it on our iPads, but would you pull up the attachment that has a list of the counties, and what all the counties, I think it's just on the regular agenda, do you have it there or not?
I don't, I don't have it.
Okay, it's on, it's on Attachment B to our agenda, and if you look at all the different counties on there, it spells out what they pay for their grand jury members, and, like, like a dummy, I downloaded a software update on my iPad, and so it went black, so I don't have it in front of me anymore, but I noticed a, a lot of the counties that were paying in the thirty-dollar range, you're looking at them, and, I mean, like, like Sacramento County, and, you know, Los Angeles County pays sixty, Kern County pays thirty, Contra Costa pays thirty, but, you know, even look at the other counties that, you know, maybe where the cost of living could be even higher than our county, San Francisco, they pay fifteen dollars, San Joaquin pays fifteen, San Luis Obispo pays fifteen, so, I mean, if we start paying thirty dollars, I think we're gonna start getting applications from people that live in Fresno County, and Imperial, and Inyo, people are gonna want to start coming to Tulare County, 'cause the grand jury gets paid thirty dollars. I kind of agree with Supervisor Ashida, or even Gene, what he recommended, I think, twenty, twenty-five dollars for a full committee meeting, and fifteen dollars for a separate, for, for a full grand jury meeting on the twenty, twenty-five side, but on a committee side, it should be probably fifteen dollars on, you know, for a smaller subset.
I think the term you're looking for is a grand jury committee, sometimes there are even occasionally grand jury subcommittees.
Yeah.
I, I, only thing I would say, and I'm looking at, at our, our staff person, I interrupted somebody, I'm sorry.
Let's see, Mike, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I would, I would lean towards the twenty-five myself.
I, I was just looking at Debbie, 'cause I think, from an administrative standpoint, to have to distinguish between subcommittees and, and committee meetings, I think puts a lot more burden on our, on our staff to do that, it, you know, I don't know what the difference is, in the sense that if your committee meeting, I mean, if you, if you're devoting two or three hours to a committee meeting, what's the difference between that and a general meeting, because it's...
Difference on those, on those committees you're talking about, the general, we meet every Friday, that's our general meeting, where everybody's there, and during the week, sometimes we have a special meeting where we all gotta be there, and even though when we show up there, it's, it's still, it's a four-hour meeting. I've never seen one go under four hours yet, been four to five hours. And, like Alan said there about, what he was talking about, it used to be that way, but it's not that way no more. People, to get them to do stuff like we're doing, like, I thought is an honor just to do it, but you go out and talk to these new people out there now, this, this other generation of people coming up, and they have no, they do not, in their mind, think they should go out there and spend that much time and just break even, you know, just 'cause they're doing a good deed. 'Cause on the, on our committee now, on this grand jury, we get like thirty complaints a year that we gotta investigate, we just can't look at them, read them, and throw them away. We gotta follow through on every one of that, no matter what it costs us, out of our pocket. And let me tell you, sometimes it does, little special things that happen, where you're paying out, and I know, I said, would you, any one of you guys, or Mr. Vanderpool, would you work for that much, just to help your city? For what we get? No, you guys don't.
Okay, Mr. White, we're not, we're not negotiating.
I know what, I'm sorry.[1082.16][1082.16](Laughter).
Okay.
But you know what I'm talking about, I think.
I, I do, okay, thank you. Okay, I want to put my two cents worth in for Debbie, does, we're, we're having, I think, issues getting qualified people, we're not negotiating, qualified people to apply for some of these committees, the retirement board actually provides a hundred-dollar per meeting stipend up to five meetings, that's why I asked if there was a, a limit, up to five meetings per month. We currently have one board member who's leaving, because it's costing him so much money to be there, and it's a good, you know, it's a good committee to be on, it's, it's, you know, it's something I would probably do if I wasn't getting paid to do it, but not everybody is like that, I think there is a generation, and this person is half a generation younger than I am, so I, we're having a hard time filling some of these key positions that we need good, qualified, committed people to, and if we, and if we can't reimburse them enough just to, you know, reimburse them for their expenses, that, that we're gonna continue to have some poor quality. And I'm not gonna say any, you know, there were poor quality members before, but, you know, I, I don't think we're gonna track the quality of people we want to have on these committees unless we can properly reimburse them for expenses or provide a little incentive to be there. You know, I'm glad to hear they get paid the mileage, for me personally, I'd like to see a cap, you know, if, if, like with the retirement board, there's a hundred dollars per meeting, with a five meeting per, or a five-day reimbursement, so you might go eight or ten days, but you're only reimbursed for five of those, and those meetings typically last, you know, three, four, or five hours as well, so I mean, where I, coming from, I support the higher amount for the regular meetings, maybe a smaller amount for committee meetings, you know, but I would be looking at the twenty-dollar range for the, the committee, so I'm looking at thirty, twenty is what I would support, just because I'd like to see us to continue to attract good, qualified candidates for those positions.
If, if I were gonna play, play Jim Maples' Splaying the Baby, I would, I would, I think I'd rather not make a distinction between the, the subcommittee meetings and the regular meetings, and just say, come up with a number, and...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five with a cap, what, what would the cap be?
Can I clarify something first, 'cause I just want to make sure that the board is aware? I, I just want to reiterate that regular meetings are once a week, there may be other special meetings where the full grand jury is required to appear, and I don't, we'd have to distinguish whether you were going to call those a full committee meeting or not, but the majority of the meetings are subcommittee meetings, and as I said earlier, a lot of the jury members fill up the majority of the workdays with those subcommittee meetings, so...
Are they reimbursed that day for if they attend this meeting, or if they attend a CSD meeting, does that count as a day that they're reimbursed for?
Every day that they attend a meeting, they get a per diem reimbursement, so I just want to make sure that you know that the majority of the days, and the majority of the time that Chuck is speaking to, are subcommittee meetings, they are not full meetings.
Thank you. No, we're done. You, you, I'm sorry, Mike, you got...
What are the most meetings that they've been reimbursed for? Fifteen, twenty at most? I mean, what, what are we talking about? Most meetings in a month, what are we talking about?
It's, it's fifteen dollars a day, per day, so if they go to three meetings a day, they get one per diem of fifteen dollars, but what I'm saying is, the majority of this grand jury this year is doing something almost every workday. So I have, there are a couple that probably work like half the workdays, but the majority of them go every day, so I just want you to be aware of that, because when you talk about a difference for a general meeting versus a subcommittee, what that means to them is that the majority of their days, they will be compensated at that lower rate for the subcommittee.
So the numbers that you provided here, the eighty thousand, is that projecting the days that they're now, or you project, or is that just the Friday meeting?
That was based on the total days claimed in thirteen, fourteen, so there were twenty-eight-hundred, what was it, twenty-eight-hundred-and-ten days claimed between all the jury members, and I would say that last year, there was probably less involvement than this year, so it may be that, you know, by the time I get to the end of the year and tally up, the current time period, that that number might be a little bit higher, but there would only be an official meeting four times a month.
Reasonable, consider a five-hundred-dollar cap a month, or twenty...
Are you talking about mileage and per diem?
No, 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 just the per diem. So, so if we were to say twenty-five dollars per diem per day, with a cap of being reimbursed for twenty days in the month, which would be five-hundred dollars?
I would say that's entirely up to you.
That's very reasonable. That's almost, that's working every day?
Yeah, that's, there's only like twenty-two working days in a month.
So you're not doing, that's...
Twenty-two in your month, there's thirty in mine.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we increase the per diem rate for grand jury members up to twenty-five dollars per meeting, not to exceed five-hundred-dollar total per diem reimbursement over the course of a month.
Second motion by Vanderpool, second by Worthley, please cast your votes, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you, Debbie, for providing that, and thank you, those members of the grand jury that did attend today. Okay, without...
And we do appreciate your service, so whether or not you're working for free, your service is much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that you have another obligation, do you want to have us come back at a time certain for the...
We're, we're gonna adjourn to closed session, and we will leave at a quarter till.
Okay.
All right. That works for me.
We, we have a number of, we have a, a large number of closed session items with everything going on afterwards, which, at one-thirty, we have interviews for librarians, we're gonna need to do some of the closed session now, so we're adjourned to closed session.
Yes.
Denise, here is, I don't know if you need that, and then there's the one there.
I'm losing pins right in the left, okay, here we are. All right. We're good to go. All right. In the matter of item G on the board's closed session agenda, Grenzman et al. versus County of Tulare et al., County, Tulare County Superior Court case number 258551, the board voted to authorize a defense of this matter and a defense of individual employee defendants with the reservation of rights on motion of Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Ashida, on a unanimous vote. Item I, in the matter of item I on the board's closed session agenda, SEIU Local 521 versus County of Tulare, perb case number SA-CE-894-M, the board voted to authorize a defense in that matter on motion of Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Worthley, on a unanimous vote. I forgot to identify myself, I believe, for the tape, this is Kathleen Vales Lang, County Council, and I am speaking at, what is that, eleven fifty-five on the fourteenth? Sixteenth, sorry, announcement out of closed session. Of course, it's a sixteenth. Sixteenth, sorry. Announcement out of closed session. Of course, it's the sixteenth.